All right, I have six thirty on my watch. Sarah's stepping in for Lisa tonight. Thank you, Sarah. And Heidi is off at a family commitment, so that's a pretty special event, so good for her. So I would like to call the Village of Cottage Grove, Village Board of Trustees, meeting to order on June twenty first at six thirty. We will do a roll call vote, or sorry, vote. Sarah, would you be kind to do that for us?
Sure. Alan?
Present.
Murphy? Peterson?
Here.
Redcliffe?
Here.
Valencia?
Present.
Vanderbelde?
Here.
And Williams?
Present. We have a quorum and the agenda was properly posted. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States
The United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, item four is public appearances, public's opportunity to speak. We ask that if anybody from the public would like to speak, to please share their name, their address, and hold their comments to no more than three minutes in case we have a lot of folks who would like to speak. So with that, I will pause, and again, if you would like to speak, find your unmute button and join in. Again, we're holding this as a Zoom meeting due to the pandemic, and so there's audio as well as a Zoom link at the top of the agenda. So with that, anybody have any public comments? All right, move on then to discuss and consider a regular Village Board meeting from June seventh. Meetings were included in the packet. Any questions, comments, or a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
All right, thank you, David. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Troy. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Moving on then to unfinished business. We have first item up is to discuss and consider the contract for engineering services. That was covered at our last meeting. And included in the packet is the agreement as well as the attorney's recommended changes. My understanding, Larry, is that the engineering firm, Strand, has agreed to these changes, correct?
Yes, and their lead, their primary person, Josh, was on vacation this week, so we didn't finalize the contract. The last, as you'll see in my notes that Matt shared with the last item isn't really a, here's what we need you to do. It's a, you know, we got to figure out some terms, really minor stuff, but the rest of it, they agreed to do.
And Josh is on the call right now, actually. He did hop on.
Yeah, he's setting a bad precedent for his availability when he's in somewhere in Montana.
Colorado. Colorado, a bit close.
This is wearing his brewer's garb, though.
Yeah. I'm happy to be here and thanks, Larry, for looking through that contract real quick. And I don't have any problems with some of the comments that you made. I think we can work that out when I get back, kind of as we discussed. So I didn't see any, anything that would hang us or hold us up there.
Any, any questions or comments from board members?
What we'd be looking for from board members is really a motion on, conceptually, what we've got in front of them with some flexibility to make some minor tweaks is needed to finish that out.
Any questions or comments from board members? Otherwise, a motion for consideration, perhaps?
So if I'm hearing correctly, then I will make a motion to approve the contract for engineering services with minor staff changes. Does that work?
Okay. All right, thanks, Melissa, and thanks, David. And we got a nod from Larry, so that's good. Any further discussion? Having heard none, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right, then we move right on to discuss village priorities. So in your packet, you have kind of the rankings as well as the list again to remind us where all these As, Bs, Cs, and Ds come from and what the background is from our, all of our comments, kind of building up to that. This will be, again, utilized for as we look forward, not only till next year, but beyond, because we do the five-year planning every year. We do that every year to kind of refresh it. So this is what will go into that consideration as the board kind of funnels through that as well as other decisions, too. Any questions or comments regarding the priorities? Or anything, Matt, you would want to add?
I think you covered that, John, well. The Personnel Committee, Personnel and Finance Committee will be taking a look at the Financial Management Plan. It's usually in August, and then the board has approval of that in September. So right, right now, it's staff and Ellers working, working through updating that. And, you know, we'll incorporate items in this list. And in future meetings, we can also discuss some of these top priorities in more, in more detail and things like that. And I'll also be sending the board staff-level department goals and objectives, so you can see things we're already working on this year. Because some of these, some of these priorities have been priorities in the past that we're already working on.
All right, any questions or comments?
I just have a, I just have a quick comment. You know, it's hard to allocate twenty points in a way that captures all of what you want to accomplish. And I just wanted to comment, I think that this probably goes for others, too, but putting zero for things didn't mean we don't want to do them. All of the things on the list pretty much are already in the process or, you know, happening. So I just kind of wanted to name that it doesn't, a zero to me doesn't mean that it's something we want to take off of what we're currently starting or working on, but more just what of all of these do we want to really focus on while we continue to work on these other priorities that we've already started?
And Sarah, I did get similar comments to that from other board members as they submitted these to me. And certainly in the future, we can discuss if we want to add more points so there's the opportunity to allocate more to other things. But at the end of the day, it's, it's really just a, this isn't an official process. The board doesn't vote on this list. It's really just a transparency amongst yourselves, the public, and staff to kind of know where, where everyone's at with, with, from a high level. So the problem, you know, if we would add more, then, you know, there's only so much that we can do, and usually it's more focused on the top, you know, say, four or five items. So spreading it out more while it's important, you know, can, can be difficult. And also sometimes some of the things that were lower on the list may be easier to accomplish, so they ultimately get accomplished anyway, despite the, despite the ranking.
I wonder if next year, if there's a way to kind of distinguish these priorities or this work is in progress? And then what new, are there new priorities? Or something when we, as board members, maybe as we come up with our list of things, maybe we think of current priorities and then new? And then we could maybe think of our point system in a way like that, but that's for next year. This list looks great. Thank you.
That's, that's a worthy discussion. The only thing with that is every year, there's different dynamics with the Village Board because of elections. So it's, it's important, even though something is in the works, you know, changes in the board could be changes in, maybe they don't want something that is currently being worked on to be worked on anymore. So it's kind of important to jumble them both together, in my opinion.
All right, any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I do have a comment. So I just want to note that I really appreciate all of us going through this and all of the priorities and comments that we had that are in the memo. I know that we all have different priorities, but I feel like these top ones all really work well together. The, as the village is the top, the Village Library is the top priority this year. I envision it, I envision it as an endeavor that will continue to proceed with the research required to go through the proper steps to do our due diligence as we do with all projects. And at the July fifth Village Board meeting, the Library Planning Committee will be presenting on what we've, the steps we've gone through the past six months to research more information about the financial impact of a library and the steps that we recommend going forward. Just want to note, too, that the library really hits on a lot of the things that we've listed as priorities, such as it will help with economic development. It allows our residents to stay in our community and to spend their money in our, at our businesses in Cottage Grove. It's by having them stay in our village, it will allow businesses to want to come to our community, allows residents to want to come to our community because it gives amenities to them. So that helps with housing as well in that we'll continue to get different housing options, too. As far as sustainability, a library can be a place where it can be taught about sustainable efforts and the climate, climate change and then the environment. It's possible that we could use, if, if things proceed, that we could use the library as a model for for a sustainable effort such as solar on the roof or rain barrels and those types of things. With our diversity, equity, and inclusion, a library gives a space that is equitable to all, that is free to go to and where you can learn about all sorts of different programs that can help our community members. And it's also about fiscal responsibility and financial planning in that currently our residents pay county taxes of over two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to other communities for the use of their libraries. And I feel that that should stay in our community. So that is something that we should think about as we move forward, too. So I just wanted to point out those few things with the library and how it goes along with our other priorities. So, thank you.
All right, thanks, Melissa. Any other comments?
Yeah, I have one. I think it's just a very important conversation that we're having. You know, when we're doing these point, pointing, sometimes these things can feel like they drop into a vacuum. And I appreciate Sarah's comments earlier, you know, being that, and I look at myself, one that had zeros on multiple ones. That doesn't necessarily mean that I don't think they're important. And I would have been remiss if I didn't mention that I had initially put down strategic planning as an option to consider. And, you know, I pointed that really high, and I just wanted to, felt like I needed to bring some clarity to that. You know, coming from the nonprofit sector, most nonprofit sectors go through strategic planning sessions. And maybe the local government is different, and I'm still, you know, getting a better understanding of how it operates. I just thought strategic planning, you know, is kind of a high level and encompasses all the priorities that are listed. And when you look to a firm or an expert to bring, come in and help support doing a strategic planning session, you know, it helps guide the conversation. It doesn't steer it necessarily, but it helps guide the conversation for better alignment, you know, when it comes to prioritization. So like I said, I'm not suggesting that anything needs to change. Not even necessarily my pointing, but I would have been remiss if I didn't mention that and, you know, coinciding with some of the earlier comments.
All right, thanks, Paul. If there's nothing else, we'll move on. Going once, going twice. All right, we'll, we'll be talking about this a lot more, as everybody knows, in the, in the coming weeks, as men, mentioned. More of a deep dive into, into these as we go forward because it, again, it folds well into, you know, not only planning for financial personnel to our budget, but also it, it ends up being in, in staff goals, too. And Matt will highlight some of those from the current year from prioritization from past years. So with that, we'll move right on to reports from village boards, commissions, and committees. First out of the gate is the Ad Hoc Sustainability Committee. We met on June eighth. The meeting was brief, discussed the potential of future outreach regarding Dean County Solar Program and the group that buys and schedule, talked about the schedule for the rain barrel pickup. It was great. Heidi mentioned this because she was well involved with this with JJ as well as others. But there were eighty-six eight rain barrels that were distributed on the twelfth. And lo and behold, right after that, we got a bunch of rain, or right before it, I think, because I couldn't get ours hooked up in time. So that was unfortunate, but that's, but there'll be more chances, that's for sure. It's kind of a neat thing because it does show how much the community really gets into this. And I mentioned this to, to JJ, I think, and Heidi, that, you know, this perhaps is another way of thinking of maybe next year, we do rain barrels and say, I don't know, composting or something of that sort. And then Heidi pointed out, yeah, and then we could do through Park Rec, maybe how to compost properly. There's, it's actually more involved than people just dumping the stuff in, so. But there are other things I think we can do based on the success of that particular program. And again, it's very limited in its cost, so touch on that. Next, Sustainability Community, Sustainability Committee meeting will be on the thirteenth of July. Any questions there? All right, then we'll move on to Utility Commission. Heidi was kind enough to, to send along her notes, so I'll just read from those. Heidi and the group met on June ninth. They discussed the zero lot limit application also, which, which was also in the Plan Commission, which we'll talk about yet tonight. Kind of good report on the annual compliance and maintenance. For maintenance, also had a number of residents attend the meeting due to the interest in the high water pressure zone looping through Pheasant Run. The new elementary school is serviced by this high-pressure zone. And the first phase of the fourth lawn addition on Pheasant Run is currently on a lower, low water pressure zone. With the water connection made to the school, Pheasant Run will be able to be looped in at higher pressure pending approval from the DNR. Utility had been planned for, as this is improvement. An additional information is coming. The next meeting for Utility Commission is on the fourteenth of July. Next up, then, if there's no questions, is Plan Commission. And here we have three items to discuss and consider. First being, and this was also covered at Utility, is discussing, consider the approval of a zero line, line application for Mitchell and Valerie Komet to split one existing duplex parcel at seven oh three and seven oh one court crossing into two lots. Plan Commission, approve this. I don't know if there are questions. Aaron, is, there were information in the packet, and certainly Aaron can also address any questions from board members. Otherwise, this is a typical request we've seen before, so it's Plan Commission. I think there was one just suggestion on, was it?
Yeah, an easement? Just a reminder for the applicant to record their joint maintenance agreement for both parcels. I know he's already got it drafted and orderized and ready to go, so.
Yeah, that was the only condition. Any questions from board members?
I'll make a motion to approve a zero lot line application from Mitchell and Valerie Clement to split one existing duplex parcel at seven oh one and seven oh three court crossing into two lots with the conditions that Aaron just shared.
Second.
All right, thanks, Sarah. Thanks, Troy. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Second item that the Plan Commission voted on and approved was discussing, consider approval of a site amendment from PBBS Equipment Company on three eight zero Progress Drive to add approximately twelve hundred and sixty square feet addition. It's actually at the back of the building, another bay essentially, to the back of the building for expansion. Comments there were just, I think, from Plan Commission was it's nice to see that this business is growing in the village. A little bit of question around the encroachment, because there is a hill behind this facility, and they may need to do some work like retaining wall, Aaron pointed out. And they are looking also at some additional asphalt and just making sure that that is contained and flows where it needs to flow. Aaron, anything else I missed?
It's another pretty simple, straightforward project. It's small addition in the back, going to match the building that's there. Probably most people won't even notice it. As you said, Kevin had a few minor conditions. I didn't have any. The only one that came up with the Plan Commission, as you alluded to, was just if there was some discussion, they may change the arrangement of the asphalt. And if they do, the Plan Commission is okay with that being a staff level approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan amendment for PBBS Equipment Corp. located at three eighty Progress Drive for an approximate one thousand two hundred and sixty square foot addition.
Second.
Thanks, David. Thanks, Paul. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Next item, then, that the Commission had was to discuss and consider ordinance zero five two oh two one regarding solar energy collection devices. This was a Sustainability Committee, as well as ordinance worked through some of this and with input, much input from Aaron as well to kind of look at this, just modernizing our current solar panel. A lot of residents are starting to get more and more use of this. The panels, from my understanding, reading is, they're becoming much more efficient and more economical to even do. Plus, it's a sustainable thing to do. So the Commission approved this. Aaron, any additional items on that?
No, just thank you to the Sustainability, Sustainability Committee, Nick and Heidi and that group for doing a lot of good research and good work to put this together. I basically just did the formatting, so. There's some changes to the subdivision ordinance and some to the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance is just better defining the different types of systems and providing some guidelines for each of the different systems individually. Then in the subdivision ordinance, just some changes, basically stating that all other things being equal, that solar orientation should be a factor in how streets and blocks are laid out.
All right, thanks, Aaron. Any questions from board members?
John, this is Larry. I had a comment if you, once you're done with whether board members want to speak.
Well, you're on air, so why don't you just keep going? You hit your mute button.
Yep, I've off muted. The only thing I would change on that is it refers to Knox boxes. And we're trying to, as you'll see, in one of the next agenda items, we're trying to refer to those Knox boxes as, I'm even forgetting the name. And actually, my computer is froze, so I can't look at the agenda item. But if we can refer to those as key, key repositories using the language from the new ordinance, that would be great. Other than that, it looks fantastic.
All right, thanks, Larry. With that change, any motion for consideration?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance zero five dash twenty twenty-one regarding solar energy collection devices with the verbiage changing Knox boxes to emergency services key repository units.
Second.
All right, thanks, Sarah. Thanks, David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. All right. Other than that, for the Commission, there was a, a presentation from City of Madison Planning Staff regarding the potential boundary agreement with the City of Madison. They were kind enough to join us. And then just a closed session regarding, regarding that. And just it's going to continue to kind of percolate along. Madison's working also on an agreement with the town of Cottage Grove as well, separate to ours. And moving ahead with the expectation, I think they're trying to get that in place sometime late summer, early fall. And then obviously, we'll be in the mix, too, as far as talking to them about getting agreement with us if, if it all goes as, as expected. Any questions regarding Plan Commission? And certainly, Melissa, feel free to, if I missed anything. All right, then we'll move on to Community Development Authority. And David, want to go through that?
Yeah. Go up here. So we did elect Sarah to be the chair, and I was the secretary. Sarah was not in attendance, so that was, that's fun. And then the marketing firm kind of went through a really quick presentation just around the logo and the marketing plan. We did ask for them to kind of give us options. I think they came to the meeting ready to talk about, or have a conversation, and it was kind of a paralysis through analysis. There were so many options available. And so we said, could you kind of narrow the scope down a little bit more so we could understand what our options are, what you guys think is the best next steps? Because none of us are, you know, most of us aren't marketing experts. So we're hoping to hear back from them. And I think that was it. Those were the two main things that happened, so. John, did I miss anything? I think I'm trying to recall.
Nope, I think just the Commission wanted a little direction, some, as you said, options, understanding that, you know, a lot of things may take, certain things may take a little bit of time. And if you line them up, what would that look like? And then, you know, what's the cost associated with that? And we do have an existing budget with this, with, with the project with them. We'll let's figure out where we're at with that. And then, you know, the CDA will then have to decide, you know, and recommend what are the next steps based on feedback from the story. So nothing, good stuff, though. All right, moving on then to ordinance committee. Again, Heidi was kind enough to relay that as well, so I'll relay her notes. Or Paul could actually jump in, too, as well. Or Paul could actually jump in too as well. If you, if you can. I don't know how much background noise you're going to get there, Paul.
I'll tell you what, if you can go through the notes and I'll verify anything that you might be missing, John.
Yep, I will do that.
Thank you.
All right. The ordinance committee met on June sixteenth and Larry was also in attendance and could also fill in, so Larry on the hook as well, according to Heidi. Discuss the final edits to the emergency services key repository units. After comments from the Joint Fire Committee, the update gives a greater clarity on the requirements for these emergency key box boxes on the exterior of buildings for emergency services access. And this certainly will be considered this evening as one of the items we have here. The new ordinance allows the village to board to kind of designate the manufacturer, the key boxes within the village at the direction of the fire department, the village board for the, consider also the design of Knox to be in the manufacturer for the village in the, turn the page. In the resolution. In addition, we had a lengthy discussion around firearms and weapons chapter, which is being reviewed due to the updates and state statutes around bow hunting and the potential of bow hunting even in, in the village. A discussion, defense permit requirements. Updates on these two ordinance are coming soon. The next meeting will be held on July twenty eighth. Larry or Paul, anything missed there? I think that was pretty comprehensive.
He covered quite well. He covered it well, John. One of the committee members was going to go back and work with Larry on some of the language that relates to firearms and bow, using use of bows, bow and arrows. So Larry, am I capturing that?
I think everything, you covered every, the report covered everything we talked about.
Yep.
There will, there will be, there will be more to come.
There was a lot of good conversation around it. I do recall that. I do recall that Larry and one of our committee members were going to finalize some of the language, so.
All right, and then as Heidi meant in her highlight in her notes, she also said, obviously, there's a few discussing consider items. The first one, discussing consider ordinance zero six two zero two one. Updates to chapter one thirty dash two six, parentheses E on the emergency services repository units.
I just had a question on that. So I assume that Chief Archibald had taken a look at it or knew about all the changes then and was okay with it. I don't see him on this evening though.
He did, and the luxury we have in the ordinance committee is that Jess is on the committee and he's on the fire department, so he's a direct link for that communication and in fact, the last round of changes that we made really, I think, really reflected the comments that came from that direction.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments regarding this consideration? Otherwise, is there thoughts on a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance zero six twenty twenty one regarding updates to chapter one thirty dash twenty six sub E on emergency services repository units.
All right, thanks Sarah. Is there a second?
Second.
Please Melissa. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. All right, and then the next discussing sitter was a discussing consider resolution two zero two one dash zero four regarding establishment of Knox as the emergency services key repository vendor for the village of Cottage Grove. And I'm thinking that was the last same thing, was the chief weighing in on this? Because that's what I would ask too. And I'm assuming was the direct line with Jess, that we probably did get that direct feedback. And Larry is nodding. And Paul weighing in, nope.
I think so. The Knox company is the choice of our, of our emergency services leaders. That's their, that's the choice that they've made. And it's what we're using now, so.
Okay, great. Any questions from board members then?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero four.
Second.
All right, thank you Melissa, thank you Troy. Is there any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. All right, moving then on to the Deer Grove EMS Commission. Troy, you want to take that one?
I'll, I'll take it. Thank you, President Williams. We met on Thursday, the seventeenth. I think most folks on the board were present at that meeting also. Topic of item was the discussing, discussing consider potential to, I don't know what to say. The consultants and we had my McMahon engineers, UW Oshkosh and public administration associates do the presentations, questions and answers about doing the study. And public administration associates was unanimously selected for that. Calls for the month were down, we're still up seventy-three for the year. There is some discussion that has passed about offering Liberty National, National to membership as initial life insurance, injury, cancer, hospitalization, staff paid benefit that passed. There's no costs to do the EMS district for that. Looked at Leadership Matrix, which was approved. And next meeting is July fifteenth at six thirty. Chief, did I miss anything in that? I see you're on the call. Thank you very much.
Chief, you might be double muted. I don't know. It can happen.
He just doesn't want to say anything and that's okay. I also want to thank the chief for coming to the Cottage Grove Lions Pancake Breakfast. Great to see you and your family there. Appreciate it.
All right. Thanks Troy. So that was two meetings. So that was the joint one and then right after that, the Deer Grove EMS Commission met, so Troy flowed right, it was right to, together.
Yeah, I made it into one for you, President Williams.
That's all right. I'm just kind of letting everybody know that that's what happened. So, and it's fine because that's the way it's laid out in the, in the agenda and I think everybody understands that, at least on the board level of what happened. So, because as you said, most of the board was there for the joint meeting. And again, it's flowed very nicely into the commission meeting. So. With that, then we've got, unless there's any questions. We've got reports from village officers. I've got some more folks then to consider for some committee assignments that are, that are listed here. We can, as we did last time, we can either consider these one offs or as we did last time, we did them all, all together. There are still, I still have a couple confirmations of committee members and then I'll work with Lisa to get an updated list out to the public when she's back this week to say, these are the spots open. For instance, I know that we have a slew of spots open in zoning board of appeals. It doesn't usually meet, but and we do need to have the folks ready if, if that, they need to be activated, as one would say. There's also a spot on CDA, one on law enforcement, maybe a spot on utility commission too. And then I'll go back through the list and make sure I didn't miss any, any others. But we'll get that out in Facebook slash, as well as the our website this week. So the community at large knows that, even though I just said it.
I had a question.
Sure.
Thanks. So most of these are reappointments, correct?
Most of them are, yes.
Okay, but is Kevin Green new?
No, Kevin was on that committee before. He's new to the committee as of, I think he filled out a term, like a year. And then I just asked him again if he wanted to go continue and he said yes. So.
Then is John Russell, is he new to one of those committees?
He's new to law enforcement. I think he was on there as a trustee back today. So I guess that's right. That's, that's his one. He volunteered for that one. So that one actually is full. So I'll have to take that off the list and I need to send to Lisa.
And then I just wanted to make sure with Kevin Loffenberg, I know that he sent our bills too that we use him for our park weed control and lawn treatment. I just wanted to verify with Larry that that's not a conflict of interest.
Right, and thanks David for bringing that to our attention. David passes the test we laid out for him as to whether he's paying attention as the newest board member. He is, I assure you. But anyway, the, 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 the rules are that anybody who's on this board or any ad hoc committee or other committee in the village cannot vote or participate on anything on which they have a pecuniary interest. So I was just on a public meeting last week where a board member said, well, I'm going to recuse myself from this field, but before I do so, let me tell you what I think about it. Sorry, you can't do that. In fact, you can't even be present in the meeting. So if there's something, this is a good lesson for everyone as it comes up, you know, when it comes up to really pay attention to this. If there's anything you're going to recuse yourself on, not because you just feel uncomfortable, but because you feel like you have a legal conflict. You need to actually inform the presiding officer of that committee or board so that they'll let you know when you're, when they're going to take up that issue and you can literally leave the room. You shouldn't even be present and silent when you're going to do that. So if, so if someone who has a small contract with the village is on one of the village committees, that's okay, as long as those, that, that contract does not exceed the threshold of fifteen thousand dollars a year. And we've verified today, thanks to David's early heads up to us that, with Sean, that this gentleman doesn't, the contract doesn't exceed ten thousand dollars and Sean does not expect it to do so. So as long as he steps out of the room, completely removes himself, if any discussion is occurring on this, on the topic of, of his own contracts, he's okay under the law.
Thank you for the explanation.
And thanks David for bringing that up. You probably should have noted that prior because he has been a member of Parks for a while. With that then.
I'll make a motion to approve all committee members as presented for nomination. Is that okay to do that?
All right.
We did it in the past.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Having heard then, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. And moving right to Larry.
Nothing you can add today.
All right, sounds good. Not sure when we can pull this one off, but we have a COVID nineteen update again. Just as any staff member, when it's jump in.
A superstition thing for now that we keep it on because we don't want.
Yeah, that's probably good. There is still the Delta variant running around unfortunately and doing some damage.
But I can report that our, we got our first big shipment of the new technology equipment to start working on the hybrid meetings, so. I should, we should have more of a report at the next meeting. We should be getting closer to potentially having it ready to be tested out in July. And if the board wants to, we could, we could probably keep our fingers crossed, be ready to go live in August. But other than that, that's, that's all I have.
Matt, that's great news. I think it gives the public another option as we come back together to join in, you know, in a certain segment, or if they're just not comfortable, or if we have a big hot topic and we have a bigger crowd, the room does get full. So I think it just gives us more options. And that's maybe one of the positives out of all of this.
John?
Yeah.
I just want to note that at the Fireman's Festival, Public Health of Madison and Dane County was there a couple of days on Friday and Saturday with vaccinations and they're looking for other opportunities for community events to be available. So maybe they'll, maybe they'll come to marketplaces, I'm not sure, but if there is those types of events, if you can, you can reach out to Public Health or if you want to let me know and I can let them know there's an event coming or a space. We just want to have it available for anyone that maybe hasn't had access to the vaccination yet and would like it.
Melissa, you don't know how many people took them up on that? Did you hear?
I haven't heard yet, but I, I will send an email to find out.
Well, hopefully some, some folks did. I know we're already, we're a pretty high percentage county, but there are still some people that, you know, haven't had their, haven't taken the opportunity to get the opportunity, as you said. And wherever we can, it is, good point, market days, perhaps it's a pretty good crowd usually. Is, is another option, future option for them. So that's good to know. Relate that to the chamber too as well. Do that on Thursday, Matt and I are chatting to them. So no more, move on then to communication and Melissa's business, starting off with the consideration of approval for vouchers. Any questions, comments there? Otherwise, consideration for a motion?
I move to approve the vouchers.
Second.
All right, it's been moved to approve the vouchers. You guys agree as presented?
Agree, let me.
Say it again, you say yes. We had it recorded.
It's really hard to make these motions sometimes.
Well, it is. You saw Melissa got through that one and she did it just fine.
Yep.
And that was a hard one. It, we just like to make sure that, you know, and we forget sometimes, you know, add those type of things as presented or with staff conditions is a, is a key one. Because it loops in all that information that we've already included in the packet. It's understood, but it's good to say it too.
Absolutely.
So, all right, I'm not picking on you David either.
So, okay.
We all do it.
David, David, don't sweat it. It took me a full year before I was comfortable to do it myself.
We'll get to hang it eventually.
You're doing great. Any, any discussion then? Any further discussion, I should say? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Correspondence? We have had several people certainly weighing in on the library, which is good as a priority. So we've heard, heard from them. As well as some, a few that are, aren't in favor, but again, that's all part of the communication that the entire board has received. Beyond that, I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Melissa, myself and Heidi met with Senator Igar last week, Friday. Just she was in the community. You all had certainly an option, but again, it was during the day and we all have Just, she was in the community. You all had certainly an option, but again, it was during the day and we all have challenges too. But we were able to, to venture ear a little bit, listen to what she said. She asked a lot of questions about our challenges within the community. The town was represented as well, so it was really nice to, that we all got together and, and did share some thoughts with the senator. So it was nice. And she, I did have Sarah send out the card when she's going to be available again to her talking session. Those are also available at the village hall. So she's definitely making herself available to communities, not only ours, but all the way around too. So that was nice. And then anybody else have any other correspondence maybe missing? Alright, upcoming community events. We just finished a full-fledged weekend. I'm still tired from it myself, but I think those that volunteered, thank you. Those that participated, thank you. I saw several people out and about, I saw several of you out and about, so that was really nice. And the community to get together, so there was lots going on from the rugby all the way down to the carnival to pancakes being flipped, to runners, to, you know, lots of, it was nice to see a parade again too in the community. So, I don't know if anybody else has any other comments about that or other upcoming events?
I can say that we're proud owners of a new ball that Gracie won at her first, her first carney experience. So, she, she picked the right rubber ducky and promptly put it into her mouth too, so.
I'm surprised the person didn't say, just keep it.
We had a good time.
Oh, good. Any future agenda items, or sorry, future community events that are coming up that people know about? Now, before we know it, actually Fourth of July will be upon us and then there's all kinds of stuff going around, around us. Alright, then we'll move on to future agenda items. We will certainly have some things from some of the committees that are going to come back through next couple of weeks. Matt, I will talk, we'll have the library presentation as Melissa mentioned earlier, next meeting. Other things that I'm missing, Matt?
I, I think we will have the Continental Properties Authentic Apartments Development Agreement ready to go. It's certainly getting close.
Alright, good to hear.
Yeah, I'm just curious when we're going to talk about fire study and possibly picking a candidate or a, a firm to do that.
Troy, I think we picked, picked that last, last week. The commission selected the provider for EMS and then we, we voted on that. It was a little confusing, I know, at the time because we didn't have to vote on the EMS one. We only voted on the fire, but it was the same organization.
We, we might have a, a services agreement with them on the next agenda. We have to connect with them yet on that. And, and I would suspect that that would, the same, the same would happen for Deer Grove EMS, so there'd be two agreements.
Alright, thank you for the clarification, John. I'll call it a great moment then.
Nobody, nobody can ever hold anything against you when you're taking a meeting, when you're willing to sign in for a meeting from Charlotte Lake. That's, whatever we get is what we get. That's it.
Well said Larry. Alright. With that then, I will make a motion that the village board goes into a closed session to discuss the Director of Public Works compensation. The village of Cottage Grove Village Board will enter a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statute nineteen point eight five, parentheses one, parentheses C, considering the employment promotion compensation or performance evaluation data of a public employee over which the governmental body has or had jurisdictional or exercised responsibility for. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, with that then we'll ask Sarah, do a roll call please.
Alan?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Redcliffe?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
Vanderbelly?
Aye.
Ann Williams?
Aye. We will move over to closed session. Thanks guys.